Are we supposed to get name tags?
Oh no, that was for our volunteer staff. Too many, too many for a name tag.
Hello. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Democracy Town Hall. There's still a line of people who are trying to get in, so if you give us like five, six, seven more minutes, maybe ten, no, no, okay. And then we'll, we'll get the show on the road, okay? But thank you, thank you for coming.
Hi. I don't know if you need this stuff that I printed.
It's just time to sleep, hello, goodnight. Break away.
All right, I'm gonna go a couple of lines.
I know.
This guy was very nice.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I tried to look it up online, I couldn't. At the office in the 76th.
Yeah.
What year? That's a good question. I would say... No, a nightclub. Well, you got same eyes as I have now, nightclub. That was a very good system. Very good. They, they were the first to have auto focus. Right. Right. Yeah, they were the first to do that, too. They're, they're no from Hilton. To Jimmy, I thought, later.
I'm up in Albany, too, same place.
No, hold on. Sorry. BMW, yeah, Jimmy. Oh, no. Well, there's this difference in, um... The kind of photography, the, the... Yeah, this is just a tour. So, so event photography, you know, this is a little bit like this, this very digital. So when I shoot... Yeah, but... But... Well, I call it down to reasonable amount, and then... Yeah, yeah, oh, I see. But when I shoot from myself, I don't do as much, I walk in the hall, do it still.
Okay, we're going, we're going to start, so please take your seats. Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to my West Side... Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to my West Side Democracy Town Hall. So, I'm Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal. I'm Chair of the Assembly Committee on Housing, and I proudly represent Upper West Side and parts of Hell's Kitchen in the New York State Assembly. First, I want to thank all of you for being here. There are moments in history that define generations, moments that demand our courage, test our humanity, challenge our resiliency, and this is one part, one such moment. So I thank you for clearing your busy schedules to join me in one of the most important fights of our lifetime. I'd also like to thank Congregation Bene Goshen for hosting us tonight. Many, many of you don't know, but my grandfather was a rabbi in Germany when Adolf Hitler came to power. He and my grandmother lived in Cologne in the 1930s, where he was a lecturer at the university there. In 1939, the very year Hitler delivered his fiery speech on the floor of the Reichstag calling for the extermination of the Jewish people, my family made the decision to escape the Nazi, Nazis. Between 1938 and 1939, over 300,000 German Jews frantically applied for American visas to escape a horrific fate. However, only 27,000 of them were accepted. My family counted themselves as one of the lucky few who made it out, and that is thanks to this synagogue that we're currently sitting in. Without the courage and humanity of Rabbi Israel Goldstein here and other, other rabbis, my family might not have lived, so, and I wouldn't be standing here. So I really thank Bene Goshen for showing us the real meaning of democracy eighty years, eighty-six years ago. Now, I don't invoke the image of Nazis or Hitler lightly. I'm telling you this story because history has a way of repeating itself, and when the past comes knocking on your door, we don't have the privilege of hiding in the corner. There are people living on the West Side, asylum seekers and their families, who are terrified of what will happen to them should ice knock on their door and separate them from their children. Naturalized citizens have come to my office asking if they are safe, if they should be carrying their papers with them to prove who they are. There are gay and transgender West Siders, New Yorkers, Americans, who are systemically being erased from our society with a flick of Donald Trump's pen. There are thousands of West Siders and millions of Americans who rely on Medicaid for cancer treatments, for their medication, for their routine doctor visits. And there are also many New Yorkers who cannot afford to eat without SNAP. I'm not sure I can even describe the fear that many of your neighbors feel when Donald Trump threatened, illegally by the way, to freeze federal funding back in January. People frantically contacted me, wondering if their home health aide would be able to come in the morning, or if they'd be able to buy groceries that week. And there are thousands of women living in New York who could lose their right to an abortion should Donald Trump revoke the FDA's approval of Mifepristone. Fascism, fascism never chooses just one victim, but when there is an attack on one, there is an attack on all. Donald Trump is cracking down on Americans' right to protest. Donald Trump is defying court orders. The White House has consolidated power over once-independent agencies like the FCC. The Attorney General is threatening to lock up elected officials, and Elon Musk, a person whose name I don't remember seeing on my ballot, is indiscriminately firing thousands upon thousands of federal workers, including many people who process social security benefits. Quite frankly, given what's happening, far too many people are underreacting to the five-alarm fire that is currently waging, raging in the White House. So, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it for you, nor do I think it's hyperbole to say that our 248-year-old experiment in democracy is being pushed to the limits. With Elon Musk and J.D. Vance threatening judges and undermining our courts, a wait-and-see approach is nothing short of dangerous. I know it sounds dire, but here's the good news: democracy is not dead yet, and we are not powerless. Donald Trump and his gaggle of oligarchs want you to believe that speaking up is hopeless and is scary, but we on the West Side know better, which is why I wanted to organize this town hall tonight. Republicans want to jail librarians for not banning books, and that's why I introduced legislation protecting librarians from criminal and civil lawsuits. Republicans are dismantling HUD, an agency that processes Section 8 benefits and funding for our public housing authorities, and that is why I have legislation creating a New York Section 8-type voucher called the Housing Access Voucher Program. The President of the United States is allowing Elon Musk to access your most sensitive data, and that is why I passed legislation last month that would impose the strictest data privacy laws on personal health information. on personal health information. The President is terrifying transgender kids, which is why I recently introduced legislation requiring Medicaid, no matter what happens on the federal level, to continue covering the cost of gender-affirming care. And Donald Trump's decision to impose tariffs on steel and aluminum will raise the rents and home prices, which is why I introduced legislation updating our antitrust laws, prohibiting big real estate from feeding AI software with proprietary information in order to inflate rents. This practice nationally has raised rents by over $4 billion last year. I've also introduced legislation to help defray the cost of homeownership by exempting first-time homeowners from paying the mortgage recording tax, saving people close to $6,000 or more in closing costs. Now, that's just the tip of legislative iceberg, and I'm not going to pretend we can simply legislate our way out of the current reality. It may come as a surprise to some of the people currently in charge, but the first three words of the Constitution are "we, the people," not "me, the king," or "me, the unelected billionaire running Doge." In fact, in fact, every great pivotal moment that you find in our history books, whether it's the brave men who stormed the beaches of Normandy, or the ordinary black woman who refused to give up her seat at the front of the bus in Montgomery, Alabama, or the suffragists who fought for the right to vote, or the drag queens who bravely resisted at Stonewall, or the young kids who march in honor of their friends and teachers who were murdered in classrooms, was led by ordinary people who stared down the barrel of injustice and said, "Not on my watch." The day after the election, I issued a statement asking all of you to keep the twin flames of hope and activism alive. And given the enthusiasm and the attendance here, you have certainly done so. I am so proud to be your elected official at this moment in history, and there is much work to do. And I'm excited to hear from our panelists how we can work together to make a difference. So, the rest of the show will be, we will hold a Q&amp;A after the panelists present. We will have a mic stand set up in the middle aisle. You can either ask your question there or write your question on the index card that was on your seat. If you need another one, raise your hand. My staff and our volunteers will pick up your cards. And the last panelist is finished, so it's not to disturb the discussion. So on Tuesday, we heard a passel of lies. Today, we'll hear the truth. I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Maria Pino from the Brennan Center. And I'll read a short bio. Marina Pino serves as counsel at the Brennan Center for Justice, where she focuses on issues related to money in politics, election administration, and election security. Marina previously served as a law clerk to the Honorable Gershwin Drain in the Eastern District of Michigan and completed a Voting Rights Fellowship in Washington, DC. She earned her law degree from the University of Michigan Law School and her bachelor's degree from Hofstra University. Marina, please come to the mic.
Thank you, Assembly Member Rosenthal. Can you all hear me? How's this? Closer? Okay. Thank you again, Assembly Member Rosenthal. It's really an honor to be here. My name is Marina Pino, and I'm an attorney at the Brennan Center for Justice, a nonpartisan, nonprofit think tank that focuses on issues like democracy. As you just heard, we are at a pivotal moment for our country and its future. The new administration has been focused on upending government as we know it. In these first few weeks, the executive branch has disregarded norms, laws, and constitutional checks. The donors who funded the President's campaign, most strikingly Elon Musk, the world's richest person, have played an unprecedented role in these early weeks. Musk is shaping policy as head of Doge and gutting federal agencies under the guise of government efficiency. And he, alongside Vice President J.D. Vance, are openly challenging judicial authority, saying things like, quote, "Judges aren't allowed to control the President's legitimate power." At the same time, Congress is preparing to act on legislation that could restrict the vote for tens of millions of eligible American citizens. This bill, called the SAVE Act, would require all Americans to provide a birth certificate, passport, and other citizenship documents every time they register or re-register to vote. So this immediate challenge before us is to offer compelling solutions to meet this moment. And in many ways, we have been here before. Cycles of abuse and reform are a theme in American history, from the Gilded Age to Watergate. We expect the pendulum to eventually swing in a way that welcomes opportunities for reform. And when that happens, it's critical for elected leaders to take those opportunities and make bold, ambitious changes. So I'm going to focus my remarks tonight on two major themes. First, the distorting role of extreme wealth in our national politics. And second, the federal government's significant cuts to election security support. Obviously, there are many other issues happening as we speak, but I'm going to cab in tonight's remarks to those two themes. And for each, I will offer some ways that New York can fight back to mitigate these issues. And I will close by offering some action items for this audience in these immediate weeks ahead. So I'll start with money in politics. This week, the President's top campaign donor rode in the President's motorcade and sat in the White House guest box at the Capitol as the President addressed the country on Tuesday night. Musk gave over $270 million to super PACs to help elect the President and even took on core campaign activities. All of that would have been unquestionably illegal before the Supreme Court's damaging Citizens United decision. In that case, five justices made it legal for supposedly independent groups to accept and spend unlimited amounts on political campaigns. These super PACs were never actually independent, though. They often worked closely with the candidates they support, and we saw that up close and personal last fall. Thanks in large part to Citizens United, ultra-wealthy donors like Musk were able to spend big time last year, and that spending gave them a fast-track ticket to shaping policy. I'll give one example. Despite campaigning on the promise of providing economic relief to working Americans last year, President Trump is now attempting to close down the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, also known as the CFPB. This is the agency tasked with protecting consumers from abusive financial practices that led to the 2008 financial crisis. You may be wondering, how could that be? It all becomes clear when you follow the money. Many of the President's biggest donors come from this broader financial services industry, and these folks see the agency as an impediment to their business interests. Many of them have invested in financial companies regulated by the CFPB, including one which has more than 5,000 consumer complaints. This is not the first time in our country's history that we've had to grapple with these issues of wealth and power in politics. In fact, Trump invoked the memory of President William McKinley in this week's congressional address, a president who served at the height of the Gilded Age. This period was marked by the fuse of private wealth and political power. Politicians routinely accepted bribes from corporations and demanded kickbacks in exchange for corrupt deals. Does this sound familiar? For example, when JP Morgan faced an antitrust lawsuit, he told the President, quote, "If we have done anything wrong, send your man to my man, and we can fix it up." Millions of ordinary Americans felt the impact at this time. Folks lost their life savings. Workers had few legal protections. But the snapshot in history ends with hope. There was so much public anger that it eventually reached a boiling point where the next president, Teddy Roosevelt, passed a wave of progressive-era reforms, including a prohibition on corporate political contributions, which stayed on the books until the Supreme Court struck that down in Citizens United. So fast forward to today. Yes, we are living through unprecedented and really scary times when it comes to money's control over politics, but there are common sense reforms that are available. And thankfully, New York State is already doing that. Last year, New York debuted a small donor public financing program for legislative elections. The program matches and multiplies small donations from constituents with public funds. New York's program is designed to give candidates a chance to raise competitive amounts based on modest contributions from their constituents, and it critically includes safeguards to deter fraud. For example, participating candidates must publicly report their fundraising and spending. In just its first cycle, the program is already transforming the campaign finance landscape here in New York. Our recent report details how the program made it possible for candidates across the political spectrum to raise the lion's share of money through constituent funding, not outside groups. We also saw a significant increase in civic engagement, with about twice as many New Yorkers giving small, in-district contributions when compared to 2020 and 2022. These findings show that there is an answer, a real alternative path forward to billionaire-fueled campaigns. And it's a reform that others should look to New York to replicate in their own jurisdictions. So I'm going to shift gears now to talk about how the Trump administration is now also targeting our election system. A few weeks ago, the acting director of the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA for short, this is an agency that was created during Trump's first term to understand, manage, and reduce the risks of election infrastructure, sent a memo to all agency staff notifying them that all election security activities must be paused at this time. And to be very clear, state and local election officials across the political spectrum, across the country, have praised CISA for providing such support. In fact, just last week, New York's State Board of Elections did so during its meeting. These attacks make our election infrastructure more vulnerable at a time when advances in artificial intelligence, rising global tensions, and other factors are already increasing this risk of cyber and physical threats. And unfortunately, they may just be the beginning of other moves to weaken guardrails in place to keep our elections secure. Going forward, New York needs to step up and restore lost capacity for election security. This is especially important right now as local election officials begin preparing for next year's midterm elections. We know that our state has several congressional swing districts that will likely become a target for those seeking to interfere with and disrupt our democracy. So one way to do that is to provide funding in this year's budget to launch a cyber navigator program. This is a type of program that would hire trained cybersecurity and election administration professionals to work with local officials on the ground on a number of key tasks, including assessing the security of election systems and developing tailored strategies to mitigate risks. We already see other states, like Illinois, have these types of programs. The state legislature must also provide funding directly to local election offices so that they can upgrade voting equipment and hire additional security support, and the state legislature has done so in recent budgets. So, where do we all go from here? In our democracy, voters hold the greatest check on elected officials' abuse of power. That means voters should use their voice, starting now, to make sure elections remain fair and secure. At the federal level, voters should contact representatives on Capitol Hill to urge them to oppose the SAVE Act. So if you Google right now, quote, "Call Congress: Reject the SAVE Act", you can find a call tool from the Brennan Center, which streamlines this process and gives you all the information you need to make that happen. At the state level here in New York, your voice really can go a long way. Our state leaders are currently negotiating New York's next budget. So this is the time when lawmakers decide how they are allocating resources to invest in past and future reforms. So in the next few days, you can remind your state representatives, you can call your friends and family who have different state representatives, to share that you care deeply about them continuing to invest in the reforms, like the public campaign financing program that I mentioned, at this critical time. So I'd like to end with an important quote from the late Congressman John Lewis. He said that, quote, "Ordinary people with extraordinary vision can redeem the soul of America." At a time when it matters most, it is critical we all share our stories and tell our elected leaders how we really feel. This obviously won't address every issue, but in a moment like this, it's a necessary start to redeem the spirit of our democracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marina. I'd like to introduce our next speaker, the one and only Executive Director of the New York Civil Liberties Union, Donna Lieberman. I've been very fortunate to work with Donna on an array of issues, including my bill that protects people's personal health data. Donna Lieberman has been the Executive Director of the New York Civil Liberties Union since 2001. Under her leadership, NYCLU has become the foremost defender of civil rights and civil liberties in New York. Donna Lieberman pioneered an integrative advocacy model that combines strategic litigation, policy analysis, lobbying, organizing, and public education. And I think there's no better speaker to come on up and talk to us about what we're facing, the legality of what we're facing, or illegality, and how we can view it through a civil rights equality lens, and then how we can take action. Donna.
And you want to hear what I have to say? I'm going to just leave this in here. All right. I really am confident. So this is a great crowd, right? I don't know if you always get this many people, but wow, right? So I think this is also a crowd that knows a lot about the threats that we're facing. And I think I'm not going to spend a lot of time telling you what you already know. It's an existential threat to everything we care about and value about our lives, our democracy. The ACLU, and you probably know, the NYCLU is the New York affiliate of the ACLU, and there's an ACLU affiliate in every state, so you can't get away from us. The ACLU spent months preparing for the eventuality of a Trump election. We did that kicking and screaming and hoping, and we were as ready as we could be. But honestly, nothing could have prepared us for what we are going through now, even with their playbook published. So, like everybody else, we had a lot in the can. We knew a bunch about what was coming, but we're all scrambling and working very hard. I want to say that, you know, part of the ACLU's strategy has been to harden the blue states to build a firewall against Trump and his policies. And that's a nice idea, and we're trying our best. The most significant thing that New York could have done to harden our rights in New York, we did at the same time the country elected Trump, which was to pass Prop 1, New York State's ERA. And thank you, Lynda, for your amazing support and work on that in the legislature and during the campaign. The New York State ERA, Prop 1, enshrines abortion rights and full equality into our state constitution. That includes a fully-described protection for gender equality,[1769.14] That includes a fully described protection for gender equality, including trans rights. So we're the, yup. So we are the first state constitution that expressly protects trans rights as a matter of fundamental rights. Our state constitutional rights are as ironclad as they possibly could be. That doesn't necessarily protect us for everything that might be coming down the pike. And I will admit that I don't have answers to everything. That's what you get when you're old enough, some of you might know. So one of the first things that we have recognized that we have to do is develop a jurisprudence of equality here in New York. Because up until Dobbs, we could rely on the federal constitution. You know, the legislature would never do anything, well, you've got Roe v. Wade, you don't need a law, you know? Then we finally passed a law. But there's still no independent constitutional jurisprudence of equality, and what there is was bad because it was based on a different provision. So we're working on that. But in addition, we're going to have to be litigating in various contexts to establish what we put into the legislative history of the state ERA, that it is self-executing, that it has value with or without a statute. The whole reason we needed the ERA was because statutes come and go. Well, not that easily, but they can come and go with, like, one flick of the political But to be in the Constitution, the current equal protection clause, or the former equal protection clause, which only covered race and creed, had been interpreted by our courts to mean nothing without a statute. So you repeal the statutes, the constitutional protection doesn't mean much. So we are working on that. I'm sorry to be too in the weeds, but it's important. I just want to acknowledge that, and I was asked to cover abortion issues as well, so I'm throwing them in, I'm throwing abortion issues in. Okay, at least I'm not throwing them out, to whatever else I was going to say. But let's remember, we have a big victory here in New York, but since Dobbs, 21 states have banned virtually all abortions. 26 million women now live in states where abortion is banned, and that includes 57% of all Black women of childbearing age. So remember that, those numbers, because that's what this struggle is all about.
We know.
You do?
We do.
Okay.
We know.
Good. And there is still more that New York has to do to protect abortion rights. New York has done a lot to protect abortion rights, absolutely. But there are some gaps in our shield law. I don't know if before I came you talked about the Health Information Privacy Act, but there's a lot of, you know, data. We live in a tech society, we're constantly on our phones. I'm amazed that people don't seem to be on your phones here. Is there a ban on phones here? Anyway, oh, that's for the schools. Anyway, but, you know, we're constantly using apps that betray how we live our lives and what we're about, whether it's Fitbit, or period tracking, or geolocators, right? There's a lot of digital activity that we engage in that suddenly Target is sending you ads for diapers because they decide that you're pregnant, right? Or they decide that you're having gender-affirming care. So, and that data is shared all over the place, and so the Health Information Privacy Act would actually prohibit the sharing of your health-adjacent data without your consent. And it sets a default that protects that data, and it's really important, you know? And the legislature, to its credit, thank you for your leadership, co-sponsor, right? Assembly prime sponsor, right? It's sitting on the governor's desk. It doesn't belong on her desk, it belongs in our statute books, but she's got to sign it to get it into the statute books. So guys, you have your work cut out for you, okay? Call the governor. I don't need to give you the number, you know it, and you know how to find it. So I have more to say on that, but I like to go on tangents. So I want to talk a little bit about what the ACLU and NYCLU are doing in response to the Trumpification of our country. And you may already know, we have filed a lawsuit challenging him on birthright citizenship. And better than that, we've got ourselves a preliminary injunction. So right now, I mean, it's so stupid, of course we got a preliminary injunction. He has no right to, like, amend the Constitution, to change the, I mean, he is not the king, right? And so this should have been, it was a slam dunk, but like, why do we have to deal with this crap? Anyway, we have sued the Trump regime over the orders banning gender-affirming care for people under 19 years old, and we got a temporary restraining order on that. And by the way, New York's such a great state, right? You know, our fabulous healthcare system, right? Trump issues the executive order, and what is it, Langone and Cornell wild, oh, okay, close up shop, right? But thank you, Tish James, right? She stepped up and said, right? She did what RIG is supposed to do. She said, you know, you may be like bowing to the king, but you're violating state law, and they changed their tune. So thank you, Tish James. New York is a great state. We have a lawsuit challenging the executive order that has banned gender X markers, so that people who are required to use the sex assigned at birth on their passports when they apply, it's created all sorts of havoc for a lot of people. And we have sued to challenge the withholding of federal funds from schools that allow trans athletes to participate in school sports. So, by the way, that was a big piece of the MAGA attack on the ERA. Oh, this is the end of girls' sports, you know? And for a long time, we tried to sort of like deflect that, you know? But then, like, their ads, did you see those ads? They were really horrific. Those ads, the anti-immigrant ads, you know? I mean, the ERA didn't protect immigrant rights, but it did prohibit discrimination based on national origin and ethnicity, which is very much related to immigrants' rights. And New Yorkers, who were inundated with those ads, rejected them and voted for the ERA 60-40 landslide. So screw them, right? Anyway, so we've challenged the ban on trans athletes in sports. And by the way, there were like, you know, 10 people that, you know, that are involved in this, 10 trans athletes around the country. And the NYCLU is representing the roller rebels. That is a roller, roller team, what do you call it, rollerblading team, that practices, that's based in Nassau County, and they practice in various arenas. And they're an adult team. Well, the people who brought us, the Nassau County Legislature, which was gerrymandered to be controlled by the Republicans, passed a ban on the use of any Nassau County facilities by any entity that allows trans athletes. So we challenged it, we won the first round, we somehow lost the second round, and just did the other day, we filed an appeal to the New York State Court of Appeals challenging the Nassau County actions. So stay tuned. On immigration, we have filed lawsuits challenging the holding of immigrants in Guantanamo, and demanding access to counsel, and also challenging the revocation of the temporary protected status, and also the expedited deportation. I mean, these guys have us coming and going, but we are, we're not going to give up, we're not going to get frustrated, we're going to sue the pants off them, and we're going to win some. By the way, about voting rights, I have to comment, we just won a very, very, very cool case in Nassau County. Did you already talk about it? No? Okay. So you know that the federal government has gutted the Federal Voting Rights Act. So we, and the NYCLU had a big role in this, led the fight to pass the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Law in New York. And we filed the first lawsuit in it against the Nassau County Legislature's gerrymandered composition, and they were fighting us tooth and nail, tooth and nail, tooth and nail. And just like a couple of weeks ago, as we were in the middle of trial, they agreed to settle it. They paid us a ton of money in lawyer's fees, so screw them. But more important, they agreed to change the district. It's not going to change the makeup tomorrow, but maybe the next day, so. And in addition, you know, the lawsuits are important, they really are, and when you win a victory, it's really great, but you lose some, we're gonna lose some, right? And we can't rely on lawsuits. We have an integrated advocacy strategy. We file lawsuits, we organize, we do lobbying, as Lynda knows only too well, and we're organizing all over the place. So we've been doing a lot of know-your-rights work on immigration of late, and we do trainings for people who want to learn what the law is and learn how they can bring some know-your-right information to their communities, whether you're impacted or an ally. It's important that everybody know what their rights are. You know, in immigration, you don't have a lot of rights, but there are some, like, do's and don'ts, like, don't let them in, you don't have to let them in. Okay, I just did a training, good. So do I have to, will you tell me when I have like two minutes left? Do I, am I already over? Oh, okay, okay. The most, I think, impactful work we can do in New York is to continue the hardening process, to continue to solidify the firewall. And what that means is, we all know that New York City is a sanctuary city-ish. But New York State is not. And there's a bill that has been pending in the state legislature for several years now, that would prohibit New York State and local governments from colluding with ICE, from the use of any new government resources to help ICE do its mass deportation thing. So Lynda knows how important this is, and many of our other legislators know, but they need to hear that you think it's really important. The state leadership needs to hear from you on New York for All, because you know what? They're worried. I understand. They want to keep a really big majority. But to my mind, they need to keep their principles, and they need to take courageous positions. And they need to figure out how to change the narrative and not capitulate to what the MAGA people are saying. Immigrants contribute billions of dollars to our economy, if that's what drives you. Immigrants have built this city and this country, right? Whether it's our nannies, whether it's our gardeners, whether it's our scientists and doctors and teachers, we, and every generation, this generation is one group, but one generation back, another generation back, we are all the product, pretty much, except the Mayflower folks, and them too, though they won't acknowledge it, right? We're all immigrants, and we need to change the narrative about immigrants. Immigrants are the most law-abiding subgroup in the country. They're not criminals, yes, some are. And so we also have to keep our mayor. Did I say something wrong? We have to hold his speech to the fire. And, you know, he has said he's trying to do what he can to get around New York's sanctuary laws. No, that ain't okay. Yesterday, I stood with all of our citywide elected officials besides him, Speaker Adams, Speaker Adams, right, the comptroller and the public advocate, to call on him to respect immigrants, to respect our sanctuary laws, and stand up and protect New Yorkers. Fortunately, the New York City public schools have a pretty decent policy of not letting ICE in without permission from the Board of Ed's lawyers, okay? That's a good policy to have. And our guess is that ICE isn't going to show up in the schools. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if they showed up around the schools. And what we need to be doing is, is we need the Board of Ed to be providing more training and support for families, so that they, and so that all kids know what they can do, how they can do it, so that they don't unwittingly become complicit in some really awful stuff. So there's so much more to talk about, but I'm going to stop. I just want to say, like, you know, you're here tonight, you know what you got to do, but if you don't, everybody, there's room for volunteers with so many different organizations, including us. If, you know, sign up for those action lists and take action wherever you can. Don't, don't take yes for an answer from your elected representatives. With Lynda, you can trust her. But, 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 but reach out beyond. The state legislative leadership needs to hear from you, the governor needs to hear from you, our mayor needs to hear from you. And, 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 and you can really, you know, learn about the issues on our website, on NRH's website, I'm sure on the Brennan Center website, you know? You got to take action, okay? If you've got money, you got to support. You know, Anthony Romero said to me yesterday, aren't you glad we didn't decide to take federal money? I said to him, we didn't decide not to take federal money. We have a rule against ever taking government money, right? Because we will not be beholden to the government, right? We have an independent mission, which is to protect everybody's rights, and who's our chief adversary? The government. So, but so many nonprofits are hurting and are going to be hurting. And finally, you know, it's not like we have an organization that we can all look to that's going to make the call for us all to that's gonna make the call for us all to go out into the streets. There are a lot of organizations, right? But we're pretty fractured, and, and in some ways, it's all up to us. I mean, I'm pushing, I think it's time for us to get into the streets in a coherent way, you know? It felt good at the Women's March, you know, back in the day, but then it kind of, whatever, and there may be too many demonstrations, but, but as we think about what we need to do, I wanna make a plea for unity, you know? We all have our principles, and we believe in them 100%, and I know that every one of us in this room is absolutely right about everything. I sure am. But we have to build common cause and find common ground with people who don't agree with us on everything. We have to make sure that when we talk about equity and equality, we do it in a way that doesn't negate the life experience, the being, the essence of anybody else. When we talk about women, we have to be mindful that men are people too. When we talk about fighting inequality based on race, we can't discard and disregard white people when we're talking about black people, or black people when we're talking about Latinos, we have to figure out how to be the big tent that has room to disagree or to not be 100% what the flavor of the day. But, but, but you get the point, and that takes all of us, it really takes a village to figure out how to be a village, so that's up to you guys, thanks.
Thank you so much. My office printed these cards, which you can distribute, it says you have constitutional rights, and it provides guidance for what to say, it's both in English and in Spanish, there's a lot outside, and if you need more, please contact my office. So, now we're going to have a set of panelists from the Community Service Society in New York, to discuss the impact the GOP's potential budget cuts will have on New Yorkers, general economic outlook, and how tariffs could raise New York's rents and home prices. We're going to hear from Oksana Maranova, CSS's Housing Policy Analyst, she researches and advocates for housing policies that benefit low-income New Yorkers. We're going to hear from Debbie Priya Chatterjee, CSS's Senior Economist, who has spent her career researching poverty and inequality. And then we'll hear from Mia Wagner, CSS's Manager of Health Policy, who researches and advocates for solutions to improve healthcare coverage and affordability for all. So, Oksana. Want to come up here? Thank you all for, for hanging in here.
I tried to stay there, but that's, now I'm here. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for spending an evening after, I'm sure, what was a long day, with, with us talking about everything that's happening, and then realizing that I forgot my notes, I'm gonna walk over and grab those. Thank you. So, there are three of us from the Community Service Society of New York, CSS has been around since 1844, we are a very old nonprofit, slightly older than this shul, but not by much. And I'm going to talk about housing, and then my two colleagues are gonna cover the economy and health policy as well. So, when talking about housing, we are talking, on the federal level, the primary agency that deals with housing in the US is called HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we're anticipating a 50% cut to HUD staff. Unfortunately, that is, it's a, it's a problem, but housing, federal funding for housing has been in trouble since Reagan, and in the US, and what we're seeing now are cuts to programs that came out of really brutal cuts that happened in the early and mid-1980s to the same agency. And what Trump wants to do is to dismantle the vestiges of the progressive era, basically, the progressive era, New Deal, and the, the funding that the federal government put into housing with the war on poverty. What that means for New York City is, we have a very robust public housing stock here, about 157,000 units, so that's like 350,000 people, your neighbors, who will be impacted by these cuts, as well as 149,000 people, so another 350, who get funding, get a part of their rent paid by Section 8 vouchers as well. And I really appreciate Lynda calling out the HAVP, which is a bill that's in the state senate right now, that's in Albany right now, that would create a local Section 8 program. Those, those programs have not been enough, so what we really need for the city and state to do is to step in, and to both kind of fill the gap that will be coming, but also to fill the gap that has existed since, since the 1980s. In addition to federal cuts to federal programs, New York City's housing homelessness crisis is also staggering, so we have 124,000 people that have been sleeping in shelters each night, and that is the largest per capita number anywhere in the US. As visible street homelessness has become harder to ignore in the city, conservative think tanks have successfully used this to whip up a moral panic about public safety, which has shaped everything from the Supreme Court rulings, recent ruling called Grants Pass, to policing approaches, to the mayoral primary that I'm sure you all are engaged with. Federal homelessness funding has not been, has not been keeping up with this growing need, we know this, we see this in the city. The thing with homelessness funding from the federal government is that it's dispersed among many agencies. For example, the Department of Education, which is also facing dismantlement in the same way that HUD is, provides support for homeless youth through its National Center for Homeless Education. Health and Human Services, again, very much under attack, and you'll hear more from my colleague, administers the healthcare for the homeless program, as well as the National Runaway Safe Line, a very important resource. Because of increased vulnerability of homeless people in this current political climate, those funding streams are gonna be the first ones that are gonna get cut, as these agencies get dismantled, and again, there's a need for the city and the state to step, to step in there. An example of this is the staffing cut to HUD's Office of Community Planning and Development, again, like a tiny part of HUD, that is going to be cut by almost 90%, and this office is the backbone for local communities' response to homelessness, so lots of community development corporations, local programs in the city that respond to homelessness, provide rental assistance, provide one-shot deals, are funded through this office. In addition to these brutal trachonian cuts that we're seeing, the federal administration is also forcing local service providers to become foot soldiers for its war on trans folks, as well as immigrants as well. So, we know that homeless shelters across the, across the US have become a central point for the struggle over sanctuary city laws, and this has come up again and again with our mayor, and HUD, as of a week ago, is allowing shelters to discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity, and martial status, because the HUD secretary appointed by Trump revoked a law that was put into place that protected trans people, as well as women with children as well. So, there's kind of a myriad of attacks that we're seeing. As I said a couple of times, the state and the city need to respond, they need to fill these gaps. HAVP is a way that the state could respond, and another bill that we're actively advocating for as CSS is the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, TOPA, which would allow tenants to get together and buy their buildings when they go up for sale. And, kind of on a broader scale, I'm gonna speak as myself, not as a representative of CSS, mayoral election is coming up, I would encourage all of you to check out a new group called the Tenant Block, that has a campaign organized around the mayoral election, is fielding questions from candidates, and is going to make endorsements as well. And I would think about the way that this mayor has performed, I would think about the way that a certain disgraced governor has performed, as you make your choices. And on a more personal level, I, so I moved to the US as a child from an authoritarian country, and as things have, have started happening, and have been happening for about, you know, since 2016, have had a lot of conversations with my grandmother that was hounded by the secret police through the 80s and then, through the 70s and 80s, and her advice to me, and this is the advice that I will pass on to all of you, was to get to know your neighbors, because those are the people who are gonna have your back when things happen. So, from a housing perspective, getting to know your neighbors is how you form a tenant association, how you fight back against your landlord, how you deal if you live in a co-op, how you deal with issues as they come up. It's simple, and it's, you have like this big scary thing, the federal government there, and something really small here, but that is a thing that's in your control, and that is how we start organizing to fight that. And I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague, Tabi Now.
Hello? Hi, thank you so much, Oksana, thank you Assemblymember Rosenthal for organizing this and for having us all here. Like you said, let's have an evening where we talk the truth, and let's talk about the real mess that we are in, however hard it is, let's just steel ourselves. So, I'm a Senior Economist with the Community Service Society, and, you know, like, one of the speakers said, "There's a lot going on, but we have to somehow boil our focus down, so as to be able to chomp away at this beast in bite-sized pieces." So my bites today are going to be the impact of the tariffs on the economy, and the impact of the direct spending cuts on the various programs, the various federal programs that New Yorkers and everyone else relies on. Before getting into the impact, let me give you some context. The Community Service Society of New York conducts a survey every year, from this, from last year, we started doing it at the statewide level, previously it was done only at the city level, it was called the Unheard Third. The motivation behind the name was, the city's low-income folks, folks with household incomes below 200% of the federal poverty level, make up one-third of the voting block. But who is hearing them? Who is hearing what they need? What are their aspirations? What is holding them back? So that was the motivation behind launching our survey, we recently expanded it statewide, and we are super excited. And what we found was, we got valuable insights into the struggles households face across the state. For instance, the survey shows that 22% of New Yorkers experienced food insecurity in the past year, okay? Think about that, I can, I can bump into five Michelin-starred restaurants, walking down the, walking down in this neighborhood, but 22% statewide people are either enduring hunger, or they are, or they are seeking out free food from charities and soup kitchens in this, in this rich state. Among low-income New Yorkers, for those predictably with incomes below the 200% of the federal poverty line, the rate was even higher at 38%. 40% of our fellow New Yorkers going to bed hungry. And this was true even for New Yorkers across the state, not just New York City, upstate, Hudson Valley, what have you, for households with children, the rate was 27%. And even among those who are full-time employed, remember the, the favorite rebuttal of folks that we need more work requirements? So even among people with full-time employed workers, the rate of housing, of food insecurity was one in five, okay? So, and unsurprisingly, food insecurity rates were higher among black and Hispanic, Latino households, reflecting current and historical inequities. Economic hardship, let's see how these folks are doing along the, along some of the other lines, over a third of these low-income households had to cut back on buying basic necessities, clothing, food, school supplies. 18% could not afford transportation. Our city, and here is, we'll, we'll take one moment of credit, CSS, working with its partners, was the champion for the Fair Fairs program, which provides reduced fare, metro cards to folks currently under 145% of the federal poverty line, and that has been a game changer. It has, it has improved school completion rate, it has led people to meet their medical appointments, just 275, it's 275 for someone who is not cash-strapped, but imagine that, like, how, how much of economic need are folks enduring? 18% of low-income households could not afford high-speed internet, let's think about all of these, when we, how we have the application processes, where we put our requirements. If you don't have access to high-speed internet, how do you, how do you connect, connect to all of these services, including education and job opportunities? Around 14% postponed medical procedures, required medical procedures, or did not refill prescriptions because they did not have enough money. So given these, given this background, what, what I would like to share is that this is a city that was expensive, and the costs are rising. So one, and one, one thing we did, as working with our collaborators at the Federal Protestant Welfare Association, FPWA, was we launched a national True Cost of Living campaign, where we said that we need to know how much it really, really costs to live and to thrive, not just to get by, not just subsistence level, okay? We need, we need to know what a household's budget should really look like, including costs for healthcare, childcare, transportation, civic participation, we are here tonight, right? And, and that has a cost, and so, so we want to know the cost of all of that, so if you guys want, please check out the nationaltruecostofliving.org, that's our, that's our, that's where our campaign lives. And then we commissioned the Urban Institute to come up with a metric that actually does that, that includes all these buckets of costs that are necessities in this modern, modern day in life, where you need internet, you need a car if you are upstate, and you need to pay for food, going beyond the basic necessities, everything that you need, and guess what they found? They found that 54% of the state's households are struggling to meet the threshold for economic security. And, and 50, and this is like, including student loans, including savings for a rainy day. And that, and what we found was, that this, as you would imagine, the share of people who are not economically secure was of course higher in parts of the, in parts of Bronx, it was super higher, it was much higher among households with children, much higher among households with seniors, who had higher medical care, medical care costs, and so on. So with that background, let's talk about how the cost of living is going to get worse because of tariffs. So, as of like, I don't know, 6:30, the, things keep changing, so, you know, my notes were prepared before the tariffs on Canada and Mexico were pushed back, but anyway, these things are coming down the pipe, so assuming all of that, what would happen is, we would have reduced economic growth, right? The estimates vary on how much the GDP will be reduced, it can be from 0.4% of GDP to more than 1% of GDP, depending on how intensely the other nations retaliate, and, and, you know, so, and how much the art of deal works. We would also have reduced employment and lost jobs, estimates vary between 177,000 Estimates vary between 177,000 jobs nationally to 400,000 jobs and 245,000 jobs from tariffs exclusively on China. Economists have studied the trade war of 2018 and 19 and found that it cost us 170,000 jobs and failed to provide any help to the economic heartland. But again, like, you know, we're let's make the same mistakes again. Let's say maybe different this time. Increased prices. So it's the tariffs are estimated to add 0.74% to the inflation. And what that means is that it would erode about $1,200 of purchasing power from the average household. So you would have like, think of like paying 1,200 more in taxes this year across the board. And that's the average. The worst part of it is that the effect is going to be much higher on households at the bottom end of the income distribution. That's because households at the bottom end with lower incomes, they tend to consume more than the households at the higher end, with higher incomes. And the kind of products they consume are going to be tariffed in a way, so the effect of tariff would be higher on them. Okay, so moving on to the other prong of this of the current economic concerns, which would be the cuts in spending, right? So to balance his one big beautiful bill, which gives a lot of tax cuts, you know, in four 14.8 trillion in tax cuts to corporations and people who are extremely wealthy, there has to be about 2 trillion in spending cuts. So the cuts in spending will manifest either as direct cuts to programs and services or reduced funding by imposing making it harder to be eligible or to access the the funds. And third would be just elimination of or of reduction of federal federal employees or federal fund infrastructure that 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 works on them. So if nobody is working on them, you would not have you would not be putting grants up. I'm going to discuss one point. Instead of going, you know, benefit by benefit, I'll just say that every cut made through any of these channels, whether it's on SNAP, Medicaid, LIHEP, TANF, Social Security, supplemental security income, housing vouchers, whatever it is, this will have immediate, medium-term, and long-term consequences. In the immediate, it might look good that, okay, your budget, you are saving on government funds. But the cost of 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 denying nutrition to a child, long term, is much higher. It is going to show up as reduced productivity, reduced, you know, reduced ability to to perform. So they would be contributing revenue, fewer less revenue later on. They would be more in need for health care, and they would be more likely to be on public assistance later. So why are we setting ourselves up for future failure? Why by 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 doing some by by not addressing these programs? I'm wrapping in and to wrap up, we have to wrap up because there is only so much that we can go through. I will I will recommend these three things that we that we do. First is to request the state legislature to seize the moment and invest in New Yorkers, invest to stand up for us. Because of all of the cuts that are coming, the state should stand up and produce some cushion. It should it should the governor included expanding the child tax credit. We would like her to expand it more. And there are three bills from our Assemblymember Rosenthal, and I am not cherry-picked, they just happen to be from Assemblymember Rosenthal. They increase cash assistance benefits by adjusting the amounts that have been frozen in time from 1980s. Okay, and and they are they also create parity for homeless cash assistance recipients, and they eliminate resource tests for cash assistance recipients. So we would like you to use use your support for these bills. It would make a lot of difference for some of these most vulnerable New Yorkers. Now I would pass it on to Mia, who would talk to you about health care.
Hi there. My name is Mia Wagner, and I'm Senior Health Policy Analyst at the Community Service Society of New York. I'm here today to talk to you about potential cuts to health care and to Medicaid, but I know you all know what's at stake, and that's why you're here. As many of Medicaid is under attack. Any cuts to Medicaid would be devastating for New York, for our patients, providers, hospitals, insurance companies, employers, the state government, and our state's economy. We're talking big numbers. Federal proposals to cut Medicaid in the Affordable Care Act threaten over 8.5 million New Yorkers. This is 7 million people on Medicaid, 1.5 million people on the essential plan, and over 200,000 folks on qualified health plans, over half of which receive enhanced premium tax credits. Republican leadership in Congress is seeking to make sweeping cuts to federal programs to pay for tax cuts for the wealthiest Americans, with the biggest tax cuts going to people making over $1 million a year. The Republican House Budget Resolution that passed last month instructs the House Energy and Commerce Committee to cut at least $880 billion in costs in through 2034. The major programs under the Energy and Commerce Committee's control are Medicare and Medicaid. The president has repeatedly stated that he opposes cutting Medicare, and that leaves Medicaid on the chopping block. Nationally, in an average month, Medicaid benefits are received by over 80 million people. That includes low-income, aged, blind, and disabled people, low-income children, for whom evidence shows that receiving Medicaid boosts their future earnings, and as well as low-income adults. In New York City, over half of births are covered by Medicaid. And what will happen if these cuts go through? States, including New York, will have to make difficult decisions, cutting eligibility, cutting benefits, or even raising taxes. The Center on Budget Policy Priorities estimates New York could be left with an over $10 billion hole in its budget if the federal government lowers the federal Medicaid matching rate. Medicaid is this critical source of funding for our clinics, community health centers, and long-term care facilities. It's not too late to influence the reconciliation process. Right now, the House and Senate have very different budget resolutions, and they need to come together before the budget can be passed. People have the power to make the difference. As Donna said, we need to get in the streets, we need to get on the phones, and we need to make our voice heard. Here are two things you can do right now to fight back against cuts to health care. First, call the six members of Congress that voted in favor of these cuts. On the Community Service Society website, we have a phone to action that will help you route those calls with talking points so that they they know that we are upset about those cuts and that they should need to vote and to protect them. Republicans only have a three-vote majority in the House of Representatives. There's six Republicans in New York. If we can flip three of those, we can stop these cuts. The second thing I need you to do, mark your calendar for Saturday, March 15. There's a protest against these federal cuts at 11:00 AM at Volley Square. We, the people, have the power to protect our communities. I'm excited to see each and every one of you on Saturday, the 15th. Thank you.
And and before we go to Rosanna Eugenio from the New York Immigration Coalition, I want to get a few questions from you. So if you have a card, people will collect them. And if you want to speak at the mic, please line up. And we can start with people at the mic. And then we'll we'll get to you. Thank you. Okay, say say your name and your question, please.
Can everybody hear me?
No.
Okay, what about now?
Hello?
Perfect. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, hi. Hello, everybody. My name is Mark Lipsett, and I live on West 70th. I grew up, I was born here in New York City, so I got pavement under my my soul. I also was, I grew up in Connecticut, and I've lived. What's that? Can you hear me?
Yes, please, please pivot to your question.
Excuse me, but I do you want me to hold this off?
No, we'd like your question.
I have feelings that I'd like to express.
Okay, I think I think we all do, but we'd like to get to the question. Do you have a question?
I have a lot of questions. I have a lot more of them.
We have a lot of people here who want to ask questions. So ask a question, or you can write it down on a card, and then I can read it. But if not, okay, give the mic to.
Hi, my name is Bob Weingarten. I live on West 79th Street. My questions are, how much does New York and California pay for the rest of the country? That's my first question. I personally would like to see New the whole West Coast and New England, New York, and a few other states below us kind of join join Canada and hang down like braids with maybe Chicago as a bang in the middle of the forehead. But that seems unlikely to happen. Why are we Maine seems to be the governor of Maine seems to have decided not to send federal taxes to to Washington? Why are we paying sending money to Elon Musk? And my other question is, how can we get rid of Elon Musk?
Okay, so who would like to answer that? The first question is, how much do we send to DC? How much does California send? And what we get back is not equal. And how can we withhold our federal taxes? So who wants to answer that? Is this on? Could you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I I I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's definitely definitely more than what we receive because that's that's how it is, right? We are a high-income, high-tax state, so so we can. But I don't know, I'll pass it to Donna if we can stop paying federal taxes. Would that be legal? Would we be in trouble?
You know, Maine is the only state that has a mechanism whereby they can withhold paying because the state pays into a fund that gets sent to the federal government. No other state has that, but it's a good idea for us in New York, right? Okay, thank you.
Can I can I just say one thing? Yeah, so in terms of the the North seceding, just being mindful of the fact that there's lots of people in southern states who are vulnerable and who also didn't vote for Trump. So we we have to stand in solidarity with them as well because they're the ones who are frankly more screwed than we are because we do have some protections in place because of the work of Niklu and other the AG, our legislature, who are fighting for us. They're much more vulnerable than we are.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Junali. I live on the Upper West Side. I think I'll increase my contributions to the NYSCLU and to Linda Rosenthal. But I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I think they might sound a little naive, but I'm not that well-informed, I think. My first one is, can anyone in your office or any of your offices help promote the unity we need and that Donna Lieberman advocated? I think we need help to organize, and I don't know how to do that myself, but I certainly could appreciate. Look at all the people here. I mean, I'm so amazed myself and so glad to see it. My second question also might sound somewhat naive. Is there anything that the New York State Legislature can do to raise the indoor legal minimum temperature to above 68 degrees Fahrenheit? That temperature is freezing when the when the outdoor temperature is below 55 and the wind is strong.
Okay, so for the second one, that sounds like a city council piece of legislation. For the first one, you know, as we saw yesterday during the address, State of the State of His Union, last night, there is not one opinion among the Democratic Party as to how to react. So some did not attend. I believe our congressman, Jerry Nadler, did not attend in protest. Others held up signs that said, this isn't normal. But what does that actually do? So I think we're seeing within the party different ways of reacting, and there's no consensus yet on how to react. What I feel is that people are increasingly getting angry. And sitting on the sidelines, which is something none of you want to do, points to a strategy that the top Democrats need to embrace. Should they fail to, I think we will be the ones to lead the charge. Now, let's.
I don't think doing anything about the dissension that you mentioned can be accomplished if we don't talk with each other. It has to start with dialogue.
Absolutely.
And dialogue means people either getting together or communicating electronically.
Well, that is happening.
Otherwise, we're not going to erase any of the divisions that we're so concerned about, in my opinion.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Goldstein, and I actually, my question is about election security. I think one thing that we've all forgotten about was during the on Election Day, there were bomb threats, there were all kinds of things that kept people away from the polls. A lot of even though we heard young people were going to come out for one reason or another, a lot of young people just didn't go to the polls. Fewer people voted in this election than in prior elections. I'm wondering, I guess the question is twofold. One is, what can we do to get more people out to vote? And two is, what can we do to make them know that they're going to be safe when they go out to vote and that their votes are going to be counted?
Thank you. I I can take the second question. I'm really glad you raised that. I mean, that's something, you know, we at the Brennan Center really focused on with election security. We need to support local election officials who are on the front lines defending our democracy. When they have the resources to run secure elections, they can communicate that to their to the folks that are lining up to go to the polls and feeling safe and secure. That's why I mentioned why we really need this funding this year. Typically, the federal government, Congress, would like appropriate money to go down to the states, give them federal grants that trickle down to these local offices. We are very concerned that that funding is not going to be available in 2026. So it's going to be on the states to really step up. And the states, as we've heard throughout tonight, have a lot to fund. They have a lot of stuff to do. So it's we're really taking that seriously. I will definitely defer to others here on the first question of getting folks out to vote. I will make one quick comment on young voters. We saw in Pennsylvania, young voters were waiting in lines for eight hours. That's that's completely not okay. We need to make sure that, again, local election officials have the resources they have to to help mitigate those issues going forward. That's I just wanted to make that a quick comment.
Okay, Susan?
Hi, my name is Susan Rosenfeld, and I have to tell you, I am really, really angry at this moment. I can appreciate everything that New York State is doing and has done, which is actually great. But what our representatives in Washington are doing is nothing. And I don't see why we need. They expect us to humor them while they get their act together, and we wait and wait. And meanwhile, I spoke to the Social Security Administration yesterday, and the office that services me in New York, which has 1,000 people, that building is being closed because they're selling it. And the people there are all waiting, expecting to be fired. So my question is, what do we do now to get our federal representatives off their butts and start doing something?
Well, one answer is that you have to let them know how you feel. And that includes nonstop calling, nonstop emailing, even writing snail mail because they have to feel it. That that is number one. Number two, realize that the Democrats are in the minority.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, let me finish. Let me finish, let me finish. They don't have the votes right now.
But there are things they could do. The civil rights movement, the leaders of the civil.
Yes, yes, I'm with you. But I think they have to hear it from us.
But they don't even answer their phones.
Okay, because they're, you know what? That that shouldn't stop us from communicating to them.
How? They don't answer the phones.
I just told you.
They don't email, they don't respond to emails.
They listen, as an elected official, I see. Listen, as an elected official, I see all the emails that come in. If I get 20 emails, I'm like, "Okay, some people are interested." If I get a flood, you realize that this is something that means something to people, and that's what we have to do.
Well, I've been doing it, and so far, I still see nothing, and I don't think we have the luxury to wait till they...
No one's saying to wait.
And there are things they could do.
No one's saying to wait.
But there are things they could do that they're not doing, that don't require votes.
Okay.
They could, for example, be blocking DOGE's access to federal buildings and computers.
You know what?
The way one... There was an agency that did it today, and they're not doing it, and they could do.
You know what? They need to feel the anger, okay? And I will talk to the ones that I know.
Thank you.
But I agree. There's not a unified strategy, but what seems to be people's opinion, and I agree with it, is we can't just sit by and watch our country be destroyed and people's lives be destroyed. So, if it's protest every day, every weekend, you know, go to Washington. We cannot just roll over. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wow, hard to go after that, seconding everything that was just said. But I want to say hello. My name is Amy Todoroff. I'm an arts advocate, and I work at a nonprofit. And I'm so glad that Ms. Lieberman brought this up. I'm very concerned about the nonprofit killer bill. It's HR 9495. We've already seen this administration willing to reach their hands into coffers and take funds that belong to us. So, what can the state do to firm up that firewall for nonprofits in New York State?
That's a good question, and I don't have the answer. But one thing I would say is that, um, one small piece of the nonprofit law that I'm very concerned about that affects the ACLU and others is that we have to report all our donors when we do any lobbying. Now, transparency is generally a good thing, but in this environment, requiring controversial organizations like us to report who our donors are is very dangerous. And so, we need to change... This is all in the ethics law, and it's a piece that's gone very much under the radar screen. I talked to the AG's office about it today, but it's something that you're going to be hearing from us about and that we have to change. We have to make sure that we're protected in expressing ourselves.
And you'll notice that all the contributors to the inauguration are anonymous. And so, it's a very lopsided transparency moment. A question from someone in the audience: What will happen when the court's decisions are ignored and continue to be ignored? What happens next? Who steps in to enforce the law when we have a Justice Department that won't enforce the rulings? And that is for Donna and Marina.
Yeah, none of us really does have the answer to that. All I can say is that, um, I think it will happen, but it won't happen across the board. You know, they have not appointed all the judges, and they don't run all the law enforcement agencies in the country. So, um, I myself would be very reluctant to call fascism when, you know, at the slightest provocation. We've had lots of not-so-very-slight provocations, don't get me wrong, but I don't know, and it worries me.
I mean, that is the definition of a coup, right? In a broad sense, if they don't listen to what the courts say, there's no democracy after that.
But, you know, I will say, you know, I mean, this is, you know, going back to what the courts will say, you know, like Amy Coney Bryant is going to be like the savior of democracy. Just saying.
Um, yes.
Assembly member, thank you for having the town hall. My name is Mike, and I really appreciate that you've given people the opportunity to voice opinions, maybe even different than... Opinions that are different than are maybe popular in this audience. That's been different from other elected officials. So, Ms. Lieberman, I agree with your sentiment at the end of your speech that we should maybe build bridges with people who don't completely fall in line, but, um, from what I've heard from elected officials from this neighborhood recently has been almost a caricature of wokeness that has been proven very unpopular at the polls. So, would, um... Would elected officials be in any way willing to renounce some of the extremes that have gotten the party into trouble before? Thank you. The question was that... The question was that a lot of the platform, um... A lot of the Democratic platform was deeply unpopular. Throughout the whole country, which is why we have the president that we do.
Okay, so people have differing, um... Differing opinions, but I think what Donna was saying, we should respect each other's opinion, that doesn't mean that we have to fight all the time, but there is a point of unity where we need to come together to save the country. And I think that's our goal. One question, and then we will go to Rosanna.
Hey, thank you for being here. My name is Strider. I live next street over.
Okay.
And I really appreciate the call to remind us to call our representatives, but more than that, I went to Chuck Schumer's office and left a copy of the Constitution on his podium and on his wall, and the next day, I got a message about avocados on social media. So, my question more specifically is: What Democratic representatives need to be reminded to vote against the SAVE Act and vote for these other policies and require us to call them, to remind them to do these right things? How do we get our political representatives to be less impotent? And then, my second question: Ms. Lieberman, can I carry your books to school? I'm making a career change. I'm going to go practice in tech and civil justice. Do you have a law school you'd recommend me to apply to? It's next year. I'm not kidding. I'm in school right now to get my undergrad to go be a lawyer and practice in tech and civil justice. I want some recommendations, please. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, after... After tonight is over and my office regroups, we can send out... We can do, you know, weekly or bi-weekly missives that... Which we're trying to do with our e-newsletter. Highlight some of the most egregious actions they're taking in Washington and how we can respond. But I can certainly send out a list of all the representatives and contact info. And now, we've kept her waiting. Rosanna Eugenio from the New York Immigration Coalition, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Let me know if I need to speak up because my voice is naturally on the low side, and it's late. I will try to kind of be quick so that we can get to your questions, and I want to just thank you for showing up. You know, one of my responses to some of these questions is sometimes you have to just physically show up or be in people's faces to get seen. Otherwise, you remain unseen, so that's one thing. But I want to talk about... I'm going to go more deep in the weeds on some of the specific immigration actions that have been happening. I will also be very honest with you. I am looking at both of my phones because there is a situation... There's been the situation that, you know, I've been responding to, an urgent one, an emergency. And it does make you nervous and jumpy and all of the things, all of the adrenaline reactions. And so, if I'm feeling that as a, you know, someone who's been practicing law for 12 years, then imagine what's being felt by people who are directly impacted by these policies, and that's where I want to start. You know, enforcement is happening, whether you see it or not. There are formal cooperation agreements, one existing in the capital region in Rensselaer County and one that was just announced during this administration with Nassau County. But there's formal cooperation, and then there's collusion, and that collusion can happen anywhere and does happen across the state. And so, that's why we need some of the pieces of legislation like, uh, New York For All that would prevent that collusion. That's why we need it, because there are things you see and things that are announced and things that you don't see. There's a lot of, obviously, fear and anxiety and with the... I call it weaponized information and misinformation. The act of putting out all of these executive orders and announcing all of these policies, just that mere act of putting it out there, is weaponization. That is fear in our communities. That does get reported in all language media, and the act of the information alone terrifies people. We have parents not attending appointments. We have families not attending faith services. We have children not attending schools. People being afraid to... This is the devastating one. Coming from an immigrant background, my parents are immigrated in the late '70s and '80s, not speaking another language, not speaking the other language in public spaces, in the trains. I notice it... I'm from Queens, so I notice it a lot on the seven train because you're afraid of being heard speaking that language. And that is a devastating thing because it's an important thing to your identity and not being able to do that and having... Teaching your child not to speak. There's something deeply wrong with that. We have also distrust in our institutions, and that is not helped by having a mayor that has policies that run around our local laws. It doesn't help that. Doesn't have... Create faith in our institutions if we can't trust our elected officials to follow the law that exists, to articulate cohesive policies that make sense, to limit the cooperation like our laws say that needs to be limited. So, it doesn't help. We have immigrant workers being scammed of their hard-earned wages because all the employer has to do is just threaten ICE. And guess what? ICE will come. So, it is... The climate out there is bleak. It's hard. It's difficult. It's hard to message against... It's hard to tell someone it's okay, not to be afraid. One of those empowering things that we can give people is information about rights. I know Tom Homan, the borders czar, is extremely distressed about people knowing their rights, but those are rights that we have always had and we will always have, and everybody has. And so, we will remain silent if that's our right. We will not open the doors, as Donna said. Do not open the door. Whatever you do, do not open the door. And we will continue to message to people what the Constitution says and what the amendments say because that is our right to do so. That belongs to everyone. I want to talk about the ways that people are being detained and some that are coming. People are being detained in regular processes. If they were required to check in with the government, they're being detained there. They're being entrapped, receiving texts and phone calls about job opportunities like construction, and then having ICE be there. They're, um... In denying applications for really frivolous reasons. That's a new one that's coming down the pike, but it's kind of an old one because it happened last time. They're now focusing on enforcement of families, adults with children, little kids, and putting them back into detention centers, putting them back in restricted settings and cages because... Because, right? Because they think that that's the right thing to do because they're upset that they haven't hit their enforcement, mass deportation agenda enforcement target numbers. And so, you know what? Let's go after the kids. That's the response. We have the Lake and Riley Act that passed, you know, weaponizing this tragedy through this young woman to pass these mandatory detention for something with as simple as being arrested for, accused of, charged with, not even convicted of a crime. If you are walking while brown or black in certain areas, you're going to be stopped. I wrestle with my mind, just on a personal level, how... What does give someone probable cause to suspect that you are not a citizen of the United States? Just looking at, right? You just look... That's what that is. It's profiling, right? That just like not... There's objectively no other way that they would do that. And so, I, you know, I wrestle with that always. It's just like, that's a ridiculous concept in my mind, but that is what's going to happen, and then it will lead to mandatory detention. And some of that is already happening. And then, the one that I think a lot of people in this room and in a lot of other spaces, this registration requirement, the idea of registering, has a really deeply painful history in the United States and globally, and that's back. And here we go again. And so, to the question of what do you do? I think you do what you did today. You show up and you speak out and you make your voices heard when there are rallies and when there are... I think Mia mentioned one. When there are places to show up, show up and be seen and be seen as a crowd and also send your letters and emails and bombard them with paper and process because it's their job to read it and deal with it and do something about it. So, I'll leave you there. Thank you for your time and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. We have one more question. What can we do as individuals to protect our social security benefits? You know, they're closing down offices. People are rightfully scared that they will not be able to get their checks.
Pay attention, you know? Pay attention. Make sure your checks are coming or being deposited, and when they're not, you know, like, make the calls and if you need to, file a lawsuit.
I was going to say, good facts make good lawsuits. Good facts make good lawsuits. I don't know if you can hear me. Yeah, good facts make good lawsuits, so not only following up with the elected officials and doing what you're supposed to do, but also following up with Niklu, reporting that, reporting that to the Attorney General's Office, reporting it to whoever, wherever documentation can happen. Good facts make good lawsuits. Plaintiff's make lawsuits, so that would be another suggestion.
Thank you.
Show up March 15th.
Where?
Foley Square.
What time?
Eleven.
March 15th, Foley Square at 11:00. I'll send all of this out. Quickly, because we have to leave here.
Hi, this will be very quick. My name is Gail Grossman. I live on West Seventy-First Street. I've known Linda and Erica for umpteen, umpteen years, and they've been my savior many times. I'm in music, and it's not always easy to do that. In any event, so I want to thank you so much because you've just been incredibly helpful. And to have this is wonderful. It's amazing. My question is... The first question I was going to ask was about social security, so that's already been answered. My question, I think, might be for Mia, which... Trying to remember. Is, uh, United Healthcare? Healthcare? I think I missed that. I want to know what you think is the status. I don't want to lose that. Basically, you know, my United Healthcare, my insurance, and SCRI, which is the senior...
SCRI won't be...
The SCRI.
SCRI is state and city, and that's not going anywhere.
Because I received that.
Yeah, and it's not going anywhere.
You're asking about your specific carrier?
Healthcare in general, but yeah, that's the healthcare carrier that I have.
Yes. I mean, healthcare is on the chopping block right now. You know, it is incredibly important, as the assemblywoman said, that we make our voices heard, especially, I know it can be frustrating and difficult to see your representatives not doing exactly what you'd want them to be doing, especially the Democrats, even if they're, you know, voting against these cuts. It doesn't feel like enough sometimes, but right now, the Republicans do have the majority and they do have the power, and we have six, seven, but six that will continue in our state that we can call and tell them about that we're worried about our health insurance, that we're worried that we won't be able to get care and that we won't be able to get treatment when we need it.
Thank you all of you.
Okay, very quick, just the question, yeah.
You know, there's a... I'm curious, actually... Well, I'm sorry. I'm curious, actually, which of you might have experienced intimidation through emails or threats? And I've... My mother took me on marches when I was age 10. Starting then, I've taken my daughter, and everything has changed.
daughter, and everything has changed. I think, you know, you mentioned Foley Square, and I think, well, we'll be shot in the legs. So, which is of course what Trump wanted to do, as you know, during Black Lives Matter. So what do we do to feel protected or what can be done? Would New York City police step in and protect protesters?
It depends, but their job is to protect. You know, that's a whole nother session.
But everybody needs to show up, because if everybody shows up, then they get the message that we will not back down, we will not be intimidated. So we all have to show.
Right, and I didn't mean to put a damper on it.
No, no.
So the answer is actually safety in numbers.
Yeah, and just to respond to that, I do clinic defense, and there is pretty intense abortion clinic defense and get pretty intense harassment, and the safety in numbers is the only thing that protects us. So don't be afraid. That's the only thing that I could say is don't be afraid.
I'm more worried about you guys, you too, actually, Donna and you, but okay, thank you.
Okay, hi, I got my question. Okay. Is there a legal fund that's established if we engage in nonviolent civil disobedience on the front lines of protesting?
That's a Donna question.
There may be, but there's the Legal Aid Society and there are public defenders who represent people when they're arrested and charged with a crime. And if you, you know, the ACLU doesn't take individual cases, we take impact litigation. So if there are systemic problems, but you know, when you engage in civil disobedience, right? The tradition of civil disobedience is that you're prepared to get arrested and whatever the consequences may be. So, and if people engage in civil disobedience, it's really important that it be characterized as peaceful civil disobedience. Because when you characterize it as getting back against the state, bring down the state, then people don't really appreciate that you're nonviolent. So you didn't ask me that question, but I answered.
Okay, we're going to have to wrap up, make it a very short question.
Hi, David Sokol, thank you very much. One question technically. According to the Emoluments Law, is a president allowed to own and publish a newspaper? Number two, this whole discussion begets the fact that our election system is based on a Ponzi scheme called the Electoral College.
Well, that's different, yes.
So, you know, 150 people can elect a president of the United States.
And actually, we have bills we've passed in New York State to get rid of that, but other states have to do it as well. Yes, next.
Amy Stone, West 82nd Street. Donna Lieberman touched on this, but what can we do to keep our mayor from turning our city over to ICE?
Vote. Go down to City Hall when there's hearings, right? Protest. Get together with your neighbors, make a sign, lots of stuff.
Thank you. Yes, and you have the last question.
My name is Joan Denham. I live on West 90th Street. My question is for you, Ms. Eugenio. I'm sorry, I don't, how do, okay. What is happening in New York City in terms of ICE, detentions, raids, all of that? You mentioned several things. What's happening here?
In New York City, I think a couple answers. What's happening in other places, because we're talking about federal laws and policies, can happen here. So there's no exemption just because this is New York City in terms of the spaces and the detentions and enforcement. It's not going to, it's just the way that people do know their rights in New York, and so it makes it harder to detain people. But that enforcement is still happening, it's just not at the same scale. Most, a lot of the targets are people who have deportation orders. That doesn't make a person bad. There are a lot of reasons why someone might not have made it to court that day and haven't had the access to counsel to be able to reopen or handle that. But there are folks with removal orders and then the dragnet effect, people around them who get caught as collateral, that is happening. There's people being detained at their check-ins or appointments, that is happening. So that's what we're hearing about, but that doesn't mean that what's happening in other places, like people being picked up in court, in the immigration courts, let me specify, we have laws in New York State related to courts, but that people being picked up in immigration court or in other spaces, that that wouldn't happen here. We cannot be, we have to be vigilant. You can't just say, oh, no, that happens other places. That can happen here too. Thank you.
Yeah. One last.
One last person. I'm Deborah Cooper. I'm very proud to be Linda's state committee person. So I, and also for decades, I was on the board of an abortion rights group, and so I wanted to give you one piece of good news, which is that in Arizona, they permanently and forever banned the 15-week ban on abortion, and that happened today.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it's nice to get good news, and it was done through a referendum, and they still have to keep fighting because the legislature in Arizona is still Republican and they keep putting up one impediment after another. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that one of the things we have to watch out for, because we have all sorts of protections here in New York, is that Donald Trump doesn't need to pass a national abortion ban, he doesn't have to put it through Congress. All he has to do is have Pan Bandy invoke the Comstock Act, which is a zombie law from 1872 promulgated by Anthony Comstock, who put Margaret Sanger in prison, by the way. And he can use, they can use it to ban medication, abortion, okay, yeah, and they can use it to do anything from, they could ban forceps. They can ban anything that might travel in some way or another. So we need to figure out how to deal with that in the state of New York.
Thank you. You know, I also think that he is so narcissistic and ego-driven that when he sees his poll numbers drop, things will change a little. But it is true, and part of it is the chaos. So every day he orders something and then the next day he revises it. I mean, it is chaotic, but here's a good glimmer of hope. I was talking to one of my Republican colleagues who enjoys getting HUD vouchers for his upstate rural community and who is really taken aback. And I said, what's going to happen here? And he says, I hope it's not as bad as we think. And so when you have a radical conservative talking to me, a progressive Democrat, that they're worried, that's a good sign. The stock market, the whole thing. But I think, you know, one thing I do want to highlight is that we need, we need hope and we need all the energy. So we didn't come up with every answer, but I think being together and seeing that there are many of us who feel the same way and want to find a way to express our anger and to demand change. So maybe we can have another one of these in a month and a half. And those who want to, like, maybe we can form smaller groups to have discussions on actions we can take. So if you're interested, email me and we can put it together. Before everyone leaves, I'd love to thank the wonderful staff at Bene Goshrin for hosting tonight's town hall. And I'd love to thank the wonderful volunteers without whom we couldn't manage this, Frank Angelella, John McNamara, Janice Oppenheimer, Richard Oppenheimer, Daniela Cannon, Jaleen Hernandez, Sean Grissom, Fran Grissom, Joan Yasmer, and Evy Silbermann, and of course, Erica Overton, my chief of staff, Ben, John Wallmeyer as well, Susan Gertzman, thank you all, Ben Anster, my constituent person who's wonderful, and John Boyes, my legislative person here in the city. We all work very hard to make sure that the West Side at least survives. But truly, I'm interested in your input on what you heard tonight, and some of you didn't get a chance to speak out, but keep emailing and I will keep thinking of ways to connect you with your federal representatives, mayors. I mean, we're all in this together, but as is clear, we can't just sit by and watch our country be destroyed. So thank you all for coming. And thank you to my, thank you to the wonderful speakers as well.